7:05, we'll open the meeting of the Halifax zoning board of appeals, December 10th, 2018. In attendance is Isaiah Nazzaro, Peter Cassell, Robert, and Jerry and myself. We're all here, except for Dan. Okay, let's start off on our agenda with the minutes of tonight's, of the minutes of 11:12:18. I read them through quickly. I didn't see any changes, deletions, additions. Anybody else pick up anything different? I read them quick, I didn't see anything.
I didn't see anything.
All right, I'll accept a motion to accept the minutes of November 12th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of Monday, November 12th, 2018. Second.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
We're five zero to zero to accept the minutes.
Can you guys sign those two?
Oh, God, we have to use everything. To use the tent?
Yes.
All right, seeing they were a little late, let's jump right into petition number 885. Everybody here, you got everybody? Okay. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 10th, 2018 at 7:00 PM in meeting room number one of the town hall, 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax, Mass. on the application of Lamellen, general contracting Sean Lamellen, for a special permit for interior and exterior renovations to an existing home located at 810th Avenue, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by CGS Holding. Sean Sullivan of 95 Shaw Street in Brentwood, Mass. is showing an assessment map 52 lot 400, title reference book 50082, page 230. The applicant is seeking a special permit to renovate the interior and exterior existing home with a new roof, new vinyl siding, new kitchen, new bathroom, foundation repair, and new wiring and plumbing, which would constitute a continuation of a non-conforming use, and alteration exceeding 50% of the real market value of the structure in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under sections 167, 8A and B. The area is zoned residential petition number 885. Just so everybody present knows, the meeting is being recorded for transcript purposes. And just for procedure wise, any questions from the audience or anything goes through the chairman, okay, when called upon. Okay, let's start off. Who's going to be speaking to this?
I'm Sean Lamellen, the general contractor.
Okay. What do we got for plans? What are we looking at?
I submitted all the plans with the building permit, so they have all the plans.
Do you guys have copies of them in the back of the package?
Okay, what are we doing?
It's just a rehab, basically re-sheet rocking. The foundation repairing, in fact, the foundations cracked all the way back in the house. So we've got to dig it down, repair the foundation, new windows, new kitchen, cabinets, re-insulating the vinyl siding, the roof on the outside, the roof to the garage. And I do believe there's a septic system going to be going in. And that's pretty much more.
But other than that?
It's a basic rehab, a full rehab.
Okay, well, what do we have? How many bedrooms there now?
There is three.
Three?
Yes. Keeping it three bedrooms still, not changing it to four.
Okay. So does the septic system just have to be upgraded or enlarged? Or what are we doing?
It's a leach field currently. So we're digging it out and putting a true septic system.
Have you gone through the board of health and all that?
They're, the engineers are going through the board of health, yes.
When's that meeting?
I don't know yet. He pulled the plans together. And if you like the plans, I can shoot them over to you. They're on my computer. And we have sent them over to the person who will be doing the digging and installing of it to take a look at the property, and then he's going to go to the board of health.
Okay. Are we increasing the footprint at all?
No.
Squared footage wise? Let the foundations stay in the same?
Yes, everything's staying the same.
It's going to remain a single family?
Yes.
Anybody living there now?
Yeah.
Where is this? I'm trying to picture it.
It's right up the street. If you go up the street, maybe.
I know where 10th Ave is.
You take the left, and then as soon as you go down, when you get to 10th, it's right on the corner, heading towards the water, right? Yeah.
On the corner of Lincoln Street.
Right next to Gregory's.
Right next to?
Gregory's house? Gregory's.
Okay.
What house back in the corner?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's right there, right?
Yeah. Across from Keith Watson's house. The green thing.
Okay, and you, sir, your name, please?
Ryan Pujol. I live on 39th Ave, 7th Ave, and 17th Hillside. My only, the only reason I was here is just to make sure that we get the septic system put in because it'd be a shame to build all this, do all this work and put it into an 80-year-old cesspool. You know what I mean?
Yeah, you couldn't do it.
No. But hey, I'm more than happy to see that place turn into something beautiful.
Yes, it's an eyesore right now.
Yeah, it's a.
Yeah, it's an eyesore.
Yeah. You know, it's less than 100 feet in the water. And having that 80-year-old cesspool that's never been cleaned, I can tell you that. Reignite it into a lake would be a bad thing.
Well, what's it sit on for square footage, the lot?
I don't have the plans in front of me, so I don't.
Is that what it is? I didn't see that.
I think the plant, the block plant is in there.
Yep, there it is. 50 by 105,000 square feet. Gentlemen, you have any questions? From the board?
Not going up any higher than that, just the same.
Same, same exact footprint, same height. We're redoing the garage, doing the vinyl siding on the garage and the roof on the garage as well.
Is that going to remain strictly?
For the garage, yeah.
That's basically a storage. I'm not even putting a driveway up to it.
Is there power out there?
Uh, there was power there. I don't think it's working right now. I haven't tested it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't even ask you your name, sir.
Sean Sullivan.
Sean Sullivan. All right.
We haven't tested the power in the garage, but there was power to it at one time. If it still works, we're going to make sure that it's up to code. If it's not, we're going to yank it.
As in, yank the power or?
Yank the power.
Or raise the building?
No, we're not going to raise the building.
Just take the power. Eliminate the power to the garage.
All right. Gentlemen, anybody else have any questions?
Outside of siding and stuff, you're not doing anything outside, right? It's all inside?
Uh, all inside. We're doing vinyl siding on the outside, and we're doing the roof on the outside.
How about any feedback from the neighbors that live in?
People are very happy to see it. Oh, yeah. Get put back to the place because it is.
It is an eyesore.
It's an eyesore.
It is an eyesore. I think I got a picture, if you want to see it tonight.
Yeah, I actually would like to, if you had. Alana, I think you're submitting with the application, is there a request for pictures? Not just this particular one, but?
No, but I can always request it if you want me to.
Yes, and then you can scroll through it. You'll see the pictures. There's inside pictures and outside.
You're going to keep the same hip roof?
Yeah, the roofs, they're the same. Just re-sheeting, like strip it. And then any damage wood that's underneath it will be all replaced. There is a rubber roof in the back section of the house, too, which we'll be putting a rubber roof on the back section of the house, too.
Keeping the roof all the same in the back, isn't it? Let's see, is that a bulkhead?
That is a.
Yes.
What do we have for basement there?
There is a crawl space. There's a three, maybe two and a half feet crawl space. So it is a tight area to get down into.
When was the last time people were living here?
You might be able to answer that, but I can't.
Seven years ago, eight years ago? It was actually held up as probate for a long time because a guy died without a.
A well?
A well, or they were trying to chase down his sister, brother would die.
Oh, it's a perfectly good kitchen. I don't know why you're going to have to.
The best part of ours.
I don't even know what that is.
Going on the wall there.
Should have seen it before I cleared it out.
Oh, really? Oh, man.
Yeah, some of these houses are just nasty. When you go in them and people just leave these houses with so much garbage in them.
And it's been seven years since somebody's?
Oh, yeah, it's been empty at least seven years.
The last one I just did, went in the house, the calendar on the wall was from 1972. And that's when they left. And I mean, the plates and stuff were still on the table. I got the pictures in there, too.
That's crazy.
Literally, they walked out of the house, I mean, books, like newspapers from 1969, 1970. Yeah, it's just, it's crazy. It was crazy. It's like walking into the past. The TV was one of those old big boxes with like three channels on the thing. And the tube was just huge.
Now, you're the general contractor?
Yes.
Would this be your helper?
Yeah, that is. That's my little one. I got an 11-year-old, too.
That's the work.
A 15-year-old was the one that trashed that house out.
Oh, really?
She did it in four hours.
Wow.
She wanted to get out of there.
Yeah. Well, she's a monster. When she puts her mind to something, she's a monster.
Yeah, food, then a leg, you mix it up. You'll end up getting into my house.
You guys want to see things? You're good?
You guys need to see it?
I'm good, both of us.
I think it's a 15-year-olds that can clean out a house, for sure. Step in schools especially, they can clean out some houses of them.
So it's going to remain as a single family, you said before? And so there's only one utilities, one everything? Kind of heat is it? I didn't even notice.
Uh, there was a space heater inside the walkway. It was, there was a picture of it, too. It's right to the right side of the entry door.
Well, either they're putting nice splits in there or we'll put a water baseboard system in.
Yeah, oil or collected or?
It's natural gas.
Natural gas.
Gentlemen, any other question or anything? All right, well, what about a site inspection? How does everybody feel about it? If we're all pretty familiar with the area?
Not familiar with the area.
I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to waive the onsite.
Do I?
Yeah, I know the building inspector did come out. And he was there to begin with, because this is why we're in the process.
Yeah, right.
Because he wanted to look at it before we did anything. And he was the one saying.
What was his feedback? What did he have to say?
He had said that the electrical arm that comes to the house has to be raised. He had said it was the issue with the foundation that we know of. And then, but that's when he had said it was more than 50% that he was going to deny it. And then he had to go through the deal. But he's like, it's definitely needs improvement.
Okay, how much of an alteration are you exceeding? By how much?
We're not altering anything. We're just, we're keeping the same layout inside the house, so all the walls are pretty much staying.
I mean, the alterations in general are exceeding 50% of the real market value. Any idea what the percentage is?
We're probably, I'd say, 65.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I mean, we're doing sheet rock, we're doing floors, we're doing the kitchen, bathroom, insulating roof, vinyl siding, 65 to 75% of the houses.
Is this going to be a property that would be up for sale? Or are you going to rent this or?
Either or. Depends on how much this really costs. The intent was to put it up for sale, but with the market taking a little bit of a slide right now, I may hold it on and be a rental property.
Okay, well, we have a motion in a second on the floor to waive the onsite. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The onsite is waived. The vote was five to zero to zero, which basically we just saved you a month. Bottom line. Okay, well, for the variance wise, any further discussion as far as meeting the criteria? I mean, I think the renovation itself would certainly be an asset to the neighborhood. So I believe it's within the established character of the neighborhood. I think as far as hardship is concerned, there's the, it is grandfathered in, certainly an eyesore now, safety reason wise and everything else. And I personally don't feel it's, it would derogate from the intent of the bylaw, seeing that most of the lots, or quite a few of the lots down there are 5,000 square feet or less anyway. Unless somebody has any other different input that would like to share their opinion.
No, I think it'd be hard not to exceed 50% of the value of the property to create it to the current standards.
Just to make it livable.
Isn't 50% of the property, when you add to the building? I mean, all they're doing is taking the sheet rock out and putting a brand-new sheet rock.
But it's a cost.
It's the cost to alter. The alterations are over 50%. Okay, well, that being said, anybody, any other further comments or anything? Okay, I'll accept a motion regarding petition number 885.
I'll make a motion to accept petition 885.
I have a motion and a second to accept petition number 885 as presented.
We want to make that pending the board of health.
Well, it would also, it would be contingent upon that.
Yeah.
It wouldn't, it'd have to meet that criteria. And other than that, anything else contingent, other than the things, the, those items that were presented to the builder from the building inspector as far as the repairs on the foundation or anything like that? I think, I think that pretty much, you'd have to sign off on that anyway. Okay, we'll leave it at that. Okay, I'll call for a voice vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Blom?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Passes five zero to zero. You can see Alana. She'll give you the processes. There's a waiting period.
Waiting period in.
Yep, and then bring it down to the registry of deeds and all that fun stuff. Okay?
Thank you very much, Jerry. Thank you for having me today.
Thank you for your input, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
This guy knows the process.
Do we have a signed sheet kicking around? Alana for the? Oh, you got it right there?
Yep.
Good.
She's so efficient. She's on it. We got a sign and stuff on this meeting for me. Regulations.
I need a stamp.
There you go. And somebody would challenge the stamp.
I challenge that stamp.
I get some letter from the attorney general.
Yeah.
Your stamp is missing a section.
Okay, we're all good with that. Let's do some mail. First one, memo from wage and personnel on the public hearing of January 9th, 2019. Everybody read that? Everybody have a copy of it?
Nobody has a copy of it.
What?
Just you.
I'm so very special. Public hearing. Please be advised that there will be a public hearing on Wednesday, January 9th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the great hall of the town hall to hear proposals for amendments and/or request to wage and personnel by law. All proposed amendments and/or requests must be submitted in writing to the wage and personnel board no later than Wednesday, December 26th, 2018, with a copy submitted to the town clerk in order for the proposed changes and/or request to be considered at the annual town meeting. Okay, letter from the planning board with attached certificate of approval to River Street Associates for the solar array. Planning board attaches a copy of the certificate of approval for the site. Plan for the solar array to be located on River Street in Halifax map, Halifax, Mass. map 117 lot 1B. The plan was drawn by Prime Engineering, Inc., 350 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. Dated February 2nd, 2018. Revisions on June 6th, 2018, November 7th, 2018. And the final revision dated November 15th, 2018. If you have any questions, please contact the office of the billing inspector. Certificate of site plan approval from the planning board, planning board of the town of Halifax. At a duly called and properly posted meeting of said planning board held on November 15th, 2018, it was voted to approve the revised site plan for the Halifax Solar LLC for a solar array to be located at map 118 lot 1, portion thereof to be known as Zero River Street, Halifax, Mass. Plan is dated 2/22/18. Update wetlands dated 6/6/18. Revisions and comments dated 11/7/18. And final revision and comments dated 11/15/18. Plan is drawn by Prime Engineering, 350 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. Full set of C-100 and C-105 revised plans were submitted to the board on November 15th. Motion was made to approve and accept the modifications of plan sheet C-100 to C-105. Final revision date, November 15th, 2018. Motion seconded, all in favor, passed four zero to zero. Okay, old calling planning council agenda. That will be, that'll be posted if you guys want to review that on your, on your leisure. It will be in the file. Planning board notice of public hearing, board of selectmen meeting scheduled. Okay. Oh, let's do some, what else do we have? That's the solar hearing. Halifax planning board will hold a public hearing, meeting room one, Halifax, on the application of Joseph Murray Hingham, Mass. To seek a special permit and/or variance to have halo lighting for the existing Dunkin' Donuts wall sign and any potential tenant wall sign installed here and after on commercial building located at 355 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Bike Realty LLC, 72 Shop Street, Unit 87 Hingham, Mass. As shown on the assessment map, number 63 lot 13. The applicant seeks a special permit and/or variance for halo illumination for the signs in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under sections 167, 13D, 5A, exterior signs. Illumination standards in internally lit lighting, section 167, 13D, 2B in accordance with section 167, 13CD. Area is zoned commercial business. Yeah. I don't know, do you gentlemen want to send an opinion? Or do you, anybody want to feel like you needed to attend that, attend that hearing on December 20th? I personally don't, I'm not familiar with halo lighting, other than like Jerry said, if it's something showing.
The lighting that comes off like a wire and it shines back at the sign.
Is that what it is? Trying to offend it.
You know, the lighting comes out from the building a little bit and shines back at the sign.
Right, it says, it says existing wall sign in any potential tenant. And then the applicant. I thought, didn't I read internal here somewhere? Installed here after. Yeah, I think it's a, you know, like, like you said, a light coming out from the building, shining up on the sign. I don't know.
It's not, it's not what's coming. It must be a light from above, right? Like you said.
Yeah.
It's got to be.
I haven't heard the term before.
Yeah, it says here, oh, in accordance with.
I don't even sure, what are the bylaws this member is signing with?
It's pretty strict.
Yeah.
I read it a while ago, but it's pretty strict about.
I know it can't be internally lit. And I know it certainly dimension size and whatnot. But any other lighting that we've done, like say in parking lots and whatnot, we've also required as a contingency that they be shielded. So in no way, you know, reflects across the street. Because there is, is it one or two residents across the street from the Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah, there's at least one.
Yeah, there's at least one there.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's just the one. Oh, who is that?
How is that?
Yeah. So that would be my main concern, as long as it didn't interfere. I know, well, there's been other. I, you know, questions with different lighting and whatnot, like the, there's the strip wall down there with that exterior light that changes colors and whatnot. I didn't know if that complied either. But we don't, we don't, as a zoning board, don't do that. The planning board does, but I thought they were, it was pretty strict requirements in regards to signage. But anyway, I don't know, that would be about my only concern, not, not being familiar with the halo lighting, you know, that it didn't interfere with traffic or, and/or the residents across the street. I don't know, does the board feel unnecessary? We need to send a letter off? Or we could just talk to them, make a? We could do that if we wanted. Let's give that some thought, anyway. What else do we have? What else do we have? Oh, here's the schedule for the selectmen's meeting, schedule. Oh, good. All right, oh, bills. Let's do bills. Let's do my bills.
Merry Christmas.
I did notice it made inquiries that there were a couple letters in here regarding, where it says our other business slash discussing on our agenda, the Tao Mai and Peep Fawn on 395 Plymouth Street inspection report. There's a letter in the file. There's no date on it. In reference to your request of 11/27, this is from the building inspector, Robert Piccarelli, to re-inspect the indicated dwelling units and determine the number of apartments that are currently in use at 395 Plymouth Street. I, along with the fire chief, Jason Viveros, conducted an inspection on December 6th, 2018. We entered the pool structure, the main house area, and the second floor apartment. At that time, there appeared to be no one living within those sections. However, the pool cabana still contained various articles of trash, shelves, and unused food, a box bringing it in a television. The main house similarly has various articles of trash and broken furniture. The second floor unit was the most cleaned out and only had two small items of furniture. Based on the appearance of those areas being vacant, only four units should remain. He also submitted a letter regarding 395 Plymouth Street to the zoning board of appeal in reference to the request of withdrawal of petition 877 involving the increase in the number of apartment-style dwelling units from four to six at 395 Plymouth Street. This office has worked diligently to help assist the owners through this process and is in the opinion of this office that the applicants have had ample opportunity and time to continue forward and remediate the indicated violations. See previous letters provided to the board concerning this address. At this time, the applicants continue to be in violation. And is the opinion of this office, if the, if it is the board's desire to accept the withdrawal, that certain agreements be made upon that acceptance. The software would suggest a 30-day timeframe to reapply for this required special permit. A requirement, two, the requirement of the owner to provide a signed affidavit stating that only four units are in use at this time and that the second floor apartment, main house section, and the pool structure are not and will not be occupied. And number three, the applicants need to be fully aware that their inactivity on these matters will not be tolerated and they shall continue on a path to remedy these violations or this office will be forced to pursue said violations to the fullest extent allowed under the law. So what is our status now? Alana, we have, they did reapply?
They came for the application. They received their butters list to reapply. And I'm just waiting to, for them to actually apply it.
Okay, how long ago was that?
Last week.
Oh, last week.
Last Tuesday. He came in to get the application.
Okay.
So I haven't seen him since. They did the inspection, Rob did the inspection with Jason. They did the inspection, Rob did the inspection with Jason on Thursday.
All right. Could I recommend that you give them a call or the young lady there that was helping her family out?
Yeah, Tao.
In, with the translations and whatnot, and confirm that the reapplication will be submitted so that there would be some attempt to comply with the billing inspector's request regarding the property? Okay, thank you. Any other questions or anything that we need to do with that? You guys all good? All right, I think we went through everything. I think we're all squared away. Anything else that anyone would like to bring up to the board? Good. How about a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Five zero to zero.